Everybody, welcome. And if we could have a reading of the little call, please.
Let's remember coffee.
Present.
Councilmember Olson. Councilmember Sharkey.
Here.
Councilmember Val.
Here.
Councilmember McNermin.
Here.
The request approval of the March seventeenth minutes.
We'll move.
Okay. The motion is second to discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Unfinished business, consider an action on bids for the Pocahontan Infrastructure Improvement Project, Divisions One and Two that we opened at the February twenty-fourth special meeting. Administration is recommending that you reject any and all bids so we can move on to issues that are our plans that are on later on in the agenda.
Make motion to reject all bids.
Second.
Your motion is second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Do we have any other unfinished business this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business ordinance number seventeen seventy-two, twenty-twenty-five, and ordinance adopting Indiana Code five dash twenty-three and authorizing the procedure for requests for proposals and qualifications per Indiana Code five dash twenty-three and for and for allowing other related action, the B O T procedure, and we need to do three readings on this this evening.
Move that we adopt the ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Mayor, in regard to that, I would move that we waive our rule twenty-two, consider all three readings of this tonight, and ask for unanimous consent to be able to do that.
That's a motion.
Yes, sir.
Second. A motion is second waiving the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Uh, second reading of ordinance number seventeen seventy-two, twenty-twenty-five, and an ordinance adopting Indiana Code five dash twenty-three and authorizing the procedure for requests for proposals and qualifications per Indiana Code five dash twenty-three and for allowing other related actions.
I'll move to approve the motion as written.
Second.
Motion second on second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And third reading now for ordinance number seventeen seventy-two dash twenty-twenty-five.
I shall move to approve the ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Request approval of supplemental agreement number two to the agreement for professional engineering services with Butler Fairman Cipher, Inc., for the Poki Bosch Trail Project in the amount of thirty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
To approve.
Second.
Any comments you want to add, Amanda, what under discussion?
Um, no, just that this is for right away acquisition services.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Uh, review and determine if Braille Coating USA LLC located at four oh one through Parkway is or is not in substantial compliance with a statement of benefit for, and if we don't mind, we'll do them both together, real estate improvements resolution number twenty twenty-seven eighty-nine, five years, and personal property resolution twenty nineteen seven fifty-six for seven years. Isaac, the floor is yours.
Yes. Well, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to come present for the next couple hours on these views. Yeah. I only get a few chances to stand, but I appreciate it. Um, no, I'll make this brief. This is another organization that we're very fortunate to have within our community. Are exceeding past the requirements that their S B one states that they require, including sixteen employees based on five that they committed to S B one. So it is what the recommendation that council considers for compliance.
Uh, Delaney, I think you're here from Coatings. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna make it really easy for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's been a motion.
I move that we find Braille Coatings in substantial compliance with a statement of benefits.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Review and determine if J K Ice Ventures, Inc., located at three nineteen Pocahontan Trail, Suite C, is or is not in substantial compliance with statement of benefits for personal property, resolution twenty twenty-three eight forty-nine, three years.
J K Ice Ventures was a project that we worked on, which included some new equipment that allowed them to expand their projects. I do have the infamous Kenny P. Wilson behind me for all the hard questions, but this project I did find in compliance. Uh, there was one note that we made. We took a look at the additional new employees. In fact, I'll let Kenny speak a little bit to that on how they calculated that specific to the steel division plan.
Good evening. I'm the other Ken Wilson. So we are a union contractor with multiple facets of our division. So we have sheet metal, plumbing, pipe fitting, and then we're expanding our structural steel welding division. So overall, the company has employees that waver throughout the projects, big projects. We rev up our manpower. When we're down on projects, obviously, we reduce the manpower. However, specifically speaking, in our structural steel division, we've added nine individuals since this project took off, along with some additional equipment to again expand our structural divisions.
You see potential for more, perhaps?
Interviewed two today. If any of you are capable of welding, please stop by.
Been a while.
Okay, motion.
I move that we find J K Ice Ventures in substantial compliance with a statement of benefits of personal for personal property.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Review and determine if Terrace Place Apartments LLC located at four hundred North Terrace Boulevard is or is not substantial compliance with a statement of benefits for real estate improvements resolution number twenty twenty-three eight fifty-three, ten years.
This one, a lot of times on the the abatement processes, the real property is the easiest one because, again, you get to see the equipment or the building. In this case, the structure go up. Uh, but I would recommend spending the next hour talking about Ken Wilson about his project. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, but.
The other Ken.
But no, this one, obviously, I'm marking compliance because when you take a look at primarily, the only thing that's reported on the S B one is the estimated cost. Uh, the actual cost of project came in north of that. So and obviously, you can see the the building when you drive by. So I'm looking at his compliance as well as my recommendation.
Would the other Mr. Wilson like to address the council?
Uh, one, I'd like to just thank you. Obviously, the project is done. You know, it was then difficult to continue this project without the abatement, so I certainly appreciate that. If anybody knows anybody that would like to have an apartment for it, please stop by.
Thank you.
There's been a motion.
Since I'm on a roll here, I will, uh, I move that we find Terrace Place Apartments LLC in substantial class with a statement of benefits of real estate.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Request and review and determine, request and review and determine, that's what it says, if Precision Edge Surgical Products LLC located at nineteen ten North Wayne Street is or is not substantial compliance with a statement of benefit. Once again, if council will entertain this, we'll do all three of them at once. Personal property resolution twenty eighteen seven twenty-six, ten years. Personal property resolution number twenty twenty-two, eight thirty-five, five years. Personal property resolution twenty twenty-four, eight seventy-four, for five years.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have, I'm gonna tag team this one. We have Deanie Boswell with us today, controller for Precision Edge. Um, this one is particularly an organization that when you, when you have a transition organization, it comes in, buys up the assets, and continues operating business under her name, you always not wonder or question, but you always take into consideration, there's some learning curves in this process. This group, um, and Deanie's a part of that, this group has really taken this project, um, I believe, to the next level. You can see that in their new job count. When you take a look at each one of the abatements, they're far above what they required on the S B one. Uh, definitely an organization that council, Mayor, I know you've been in there. If you haven't, um, I would recommend that you take a look at this operations because it is pretty cool that we have this type of business here in town. I don't want Deanie to say anything if she'd like, but she don't have to.
No, I don't answer any questions you have, but, um, yeah, it's a great company. I just recently started working there in October of last year, and we're growing a lot, so that's good news. I like to see that.
And so do we. Entertained a motion.
Move that we find Precision Edge Surgical Products LLC in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits for all three resolutions.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. And we really need Precision Edge and Terrace Place and J K and Rigel for everything they do for our community. They are great employers, great partners. We love having you here, and we love to see you expand here. And anytime we can help you increase your business or your footprint or your physical plant, let us know. We're more than willing to talk to you and help you promote your business and and move your businesses forward. So thank you all for being here and being community partners because you truly are, all of you are very much community partners.
See me one more time because I think we've got five left. Not today, of course.
I hope.
The list is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, we now recognize you on the floor is yours regarding the wastewater chloride
All right, well.
If some of you want to take off and leave, you may. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to ignore.
Craig, you cleared the room.
My friends in the back row were taking bets on how long I was gonna be taking tonight.
It's not like we're watching, but.
Now, I'll see you over on your. Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor. Quick intro so you know who I am and why I'm here because I know a few of you are new on the council since I was last, uh, in sitting in this room. I moved to Angola ninety-two, uh, to go to school Tri-State University, and I graduated from Tri-State with environmental science degree. Uh, my wife and I purchased our first home in Angola in nineteen ninety-nine, raised four children there until we moved outside of Hamilton in two thousand seventeen. Um, I joined the Angola Volunteer Fire Department ninety-six, served ten years with them. Mayor Hickman hired me, well, at the Angola Waste Water Treatment Plant as an operator in, um, uh, two thousand one. Um, I always joked that he demoted me to superintendent in two thousand five, and I served there through twenty twenty-one. Um, I've been involved in Angola, in Angola's chloride compliance path, uh, from the beginning, and led an effort to find durable compliance alternatives for Angola. And I committed to Superintendent Gaff and Mayor Hickman at the time, now Mayor Martin, to help see the process through after I left the city. So I just wanted to sort of set the stage of, you know, who I am, why I'm here. Feel very strongly about the path that we've taken, uh, as a community so far. Uh, and my challenge tonight is to bring you through nineteen years of history without boring you tears, um, hopefully. Uh, five years ago, it was our hope that we would not have to have this meeting, uh, but here we are. And so the goals tonight are to provide a brief history of the challenge Angola is faced with, um, to summarize the efforts made to date, describe the current compliance status and timeline, and then provide, uh, an open discussion on paths that are sort of before you at this point, and then ultimately seek guidance from the council on the desired path, um, to communicate our plan with I D E M and U S E P A. Um, and I'll say I've got, I've got four kids, so I'm used to being, used to being interrupted. So if at any time you have questions, please, please don't hesitate to throw something at me if I'm not paying attention. Really not a whole lot here. Well, you know, the history of Angola, founded in eighteen thirty-eight, the first sewers were installed, we believe, in the eighteen nineties and likely went to the H D Wood Ditch, where we discharge to today. Point being, hundred and, uh, carry the one hundred, what, thirty-five years of of history, um, discharging wastewater treated effluent to the Wood Ditch. You know, next slide, right? Angola Waste Water Treatment Plant ultimately flows to the Great Lakes. Uh, it operates under a stringent National Pluton Discharge Elimination Program permit. Uh, it has continuously operated with a chemical phosphorus removal process since the nineteen nineties. And I bring that up because that's almost thirty years ahead of almost eighty-five, ninety percent of Indiana. Um, they are, a lot of Indiana are just now beginning to get phosphorus limits on their permit. Um, the early two thousands, Angola wastewater, um, complied with new stringent ammonia nitrogen limits. Angola was one of the first communities in Indiana to complete its combined sewer overflow a long-term control plant. Um, that was over twelve, maybe thirteen million dollars of improvements over a period of about ten or fifteen years. Historically, my point to that is historically, Angola leadership has been leading water quality in Indiana for decades. Um, when chlorides limits were proposed into Angola's permit in two thousand nine, we anticipated this to be another challenge, uh, like phosphorus removal, um, ammonia removal, or meaning the extremely high level of, uh, combined sewer overflow control that we we see today. Unfortunately, what we realized very quickly on is that wastewater treatment processes do not remove chlorides from wastewater, and finding a way to make that happen is very Um, the Angola wastewater plant discharges treated effluent to the H D Wood Ditch or Mud Creek. The Indiana Department of Environmental Management, uh, I'm gonna try to not use abbreviations here because I recognize in in our world, we we do that and it confuses everybody. But, uh, the watershed assessment branch conducts regular assays of Indiana streams, and in the two thousand survey, uh, they were in the northeast quadrant of Indiana, and they identified the Wood Ditch as impaired, uh, due to elevated levels of chloride originating from the Angola wastewater plant. Pigeon Creek is not impaired. It's just the two point nine mile stretch, uh, that green line on the map, uh, between the wastewater plant and the confluence with the Pigeon Creek.
Craig, since you like to be, uh, interrupted.
Absolutely.
Um, is the issue right now, the fact there's that the discharge goes into a low volume amount of water, thus raising whatever the measurement, P P M?
Concentration, yes.
Okay, and that's why when it gets to Pigeon Creek, there isn't an issue.
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Yep. Elevated chlorides, something I think is really important to understand, it is not a public health concern. The sole issue with chlorides is that they pose a problem to certain sensitive freshwater, uh, aquatic life.
Can I ask you another?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back on the twenty twenty-two A N report, I tried to do some homework coming into this. There was, um, actually, it was before this, it was the two thousand ten comments regarding, uh, somebody said about the aquatic issues that there weren't any. It was this article that was Angola Chloride Problems Identified. And at the very end of it, it talks about that the any species of aquatic vegetation that there is no issue. Is that true or not true?
It is, it's, it's complex.
Well, is it true in I D E M's eye?
It is true in I D E M's eye.
Okay, that they're the.
Yes, absolutely.
They're the governing.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, and 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 exactly to your point, um, the wastewater plant, um, it, once a year, has to test its effluent annually for completing what's called a whole effluent toxicity test. The idea behind that test is, um, certain metals might be toxic to certain critters, uh, certain other components might be toxic here, but, but you may see no toxicity, but maybe the entire, maybe the whole, the sum total of these different constituents cause problems. And so, uh, what Jeff does is for a week, they take additional effluent, they send it down to a lab in Indianapolis. And, uh, they, in this test, they grow macro invertebrates, uh, a water flea called Sarodaphnia dubia and a fat head minnow. And they're grown and reproduced in a hundred percent effluent. And they have to reproduce, grow with the same vigor as their counterparts in, uh, control tanks. And if they don't, the the test fails. Uh, Angola has undertaken that test for twenty-eight years and never once failed that test, uh, due to, uh, effluent toxicity. And so they have an excellent, long-running history that the effluent meets, um, uh, can can support aquatic growth, sensitive aquatic growth. Um, as a matter of fact, I noted in here, um, we've noticed in our final clarifiers, occasionally we'll get blooms of this daphnia that they actually test for in our, in our clarifiers, in the wastewater treatment processes. And so, um, it it makes a bit of a challenge. Uh, I D E M looks at, um, uh, what could possibly happen. We're living in the real time and and we're not seeing any effects.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, please.
Having trouble grasping the concept. The problem is that the ditch is dry, but we're talking about freshwater wildlife.
Yeah.
If it's dry, there can't be any freshwater wildlife in there, can there?
Um, so the, you, you guys are like two, two sentences ahead of me.
Okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't know that. You said that freshwater wildlife and.
To your points and so. Uh, so, yeah, so the Wood Ditch is, it's considered a zero-flow stream, except for the fact that Angola has a discharge, uh, from the wastewater treatment plant. And so, um, the city has sort of put in this weird, uh, paradoxical position where without flow from the wastewater plant, aquatic life wouldn't exist, or they would exist in extraordinarily limited capacities. But because of the city's effluent flow, because it's so clean, um, aquatic life is present, um, and what is there is acclimated to the conditions of the Wood Ditch. And so it's exactly the, one of the things that we continue to bring up to I D E M. Uh, we understand the intent of the rules and the regulations, but we are in, we are in a very unique position. Uh, Council Schauf is about to tell me there's no such thing as very.
Say, that's what they all say, isn't it?
Or not. I've, I've, I've been sitting.
Craig, um, another question, too, you brought up about I D E M. Um, I realize they're scientists, but are the people that were trying to work with you fifteen, twenty years ago retired and gone, or are you trying to retrain new people now is what the issue is?
Um, tho- those people are retiring out, but there still is a core of them there that do understand.
Understand this.
This, this, this issue, yes. One of the challenges, um, my opinion, one of the challenges I think that we are facing uh, with I D E M is they constant, everything, uh, E P A Region Five, which is out of Chicago, which, which oversees the state's regulating capacity, um, they are overlooking all of these things. And I, I personally feel that nothing terrifies I D E M more than anything else than to have E P A say no. Um, I wish they would take a little harder stance, but, um, I, I really truly believe that's the issue. I believe that fundamentally, the people that we've sat around the table discussing this understand and would at least conceptually agree with our position, but they, they, uh.
Hands are tied.
Hands are tied.
Yeah, the guideline is the guideline. I, I know that they like flash of light.
Yep. And and I D E M calculates permit limits, uh, to be protected of all aquatic life, uh, regardless of unique watershed characteristics is really the challenge we're at. Uh, so really quickly, what, what are chlorides?
Let me ask one of.
Yes, yes, yes.
What I think I hear is, um, they're not drawing a line in sand, they've just made a recommendation. There's a difference.
I believe that's a fair statement. Yes, I believe that's a fair statement.
And they're asking us to conform or comply?
They, I would say that they would prefer to comply because that is the path of least resistance for them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, chlorides are in any product, chemical food or drink that has ingredients with chlorine adamantic. It's ubiquitous, it's everywhere. Um, almost all household cleaners and detergents include one or more active ingredients that contain, uh, it in its chemical composition. Bleach is sodium, uh, hyperchlorite, chloride, um, uh, salt, sodium chloride. If you're watching your salt intake, you, you recognize that. I suspect that on the ingredients of that bottle of water, Amanda, it includes some form of chloride. Purified water, but probably has potassium chloride put in it. Chlorides are everywhere. Um, dyes in clothing and bedding, medicines, supplements, cosmetics, lotions, toiletries, soap, shampoos, toothpaste. Um, when we consume salt, chlorides are excreted through sweat, tears, through the liver and kidney as waste products comes in the wastewater plant. I'll refer back a couple slides, wastewater treatment does not remove chlorides. So chlorides that come into the wastewater plant go out of the wastewater treatment plant.
Craig, um, when I was doing a search on I D E M and trying to understand, uh, excessive chloride variances and regulations, the only town that's named is Angola. Is that, is that real?
Angola is the only, uh, permit holder in Indiana that has an individual variance for anything at all.
And and all the other towns, because I, I understand chlorides, it's in everything. All the other towns are compliant?
Um, other communities have different challenges. Um, uh, one community that I'm aware of had two wastewater treatment plants. Um, the old wastewater treatment plant that was near the center of downtown, uh, discharged to a stream very similar to Angola. Chlorides came into their permit, they decided we're gonna shut the plant down, turn it into a pump station, and take it over to the other wastewater plant that discharges to a larger body of water.
They can dilute it more.
Yes.
I got you.
Indianapolis was faced with this, this challenge a few years ago. I, I truly don't know where they stand, I just know they don't have a variance. Um, another community that I'm aware of, um, was faced with this challenge, and this is gonna be part of the discussion at the end especially, um, or I'm not even convinced from the history that I read that they actually had a chlorides problem, but used it as a, used it as an opportunity to fund, uh, their, their water treatment plant already needed upgrades. It was falling apart, it was in shambles, it was within years of. And so they used it as the, the mechanism to change their water treatment processes. And, and, and that took them out of that issue with I D E M. So I do see that this is probably gonna continue raising its head. Wisconsin is, uh, is, uh, dealing with this. They have a lot of communities that are similar to Angola, where there are larger communities that discharge to lower flow streams. Uh, California, uh, has focused on this for at least fifteen years. Um, and some of the solutions that they've tried to implement have not been effective, one of those being effective, effective elimination of all, um, uh, water softeners, uh, salt-based water softeners. Now, you tell me how you want to run that program in Angola, right? Um, and so there are a lot of things, one of the things that I've been frustrated with every year, every time we, uh, come around our permit renewal cycle, uh, we talk about this with I D E M, and they, they send us a list of, uh, uh, community programs, and effectively all they are, education and outreach, things that we've already done for the last fifteen years.
That's the P M P P stuff that you've been doing, because that's all educational. That's like, it's not gonna buy you anything.
Right.
Okay. I wondered who created that, so when I saw that, that's not gonna effectively change your, your discharge at all.
No, and, um, uh, we, we have seen really little to no improvements with that, and, and I, I don't know that, um, there are any other, uh, what I would call reasonable pollution minimization elements that we could implement, um.
Are you planning on talking about any of the P M P P stuff from the?
I'll touch a little, I'll touch a little bit on it.
I have some questions.
Okay.
About some of the actions.
Yeah, I'll touch a little bit on that, so hit me up there for sure. Um, so we talked about chlorides coming in from a number of sources, I'm gonna throw about chlorides coming in from a number of sources. I'm going to throw in chemistry 101 for just a brief little bit. The chart above, chlorides are considered in the smallest range in the ionic range. And so to remove chlorides out of water, now think you're, you're making a pot of spaghetti, you throw some salt in, how are you going to get that salt back out? There's really three main processes. One is you can boil all the water out of the pot, make it all turn to steam, and you'll have, that salt will be the residual on the bottom of the pan. You can push us, push it through a reverse osmosis filter, or you can do electrodialysis, basically ion exchange, chemically intensive programs. Chlorides come from a number of sources. About half of the chlorides that Angola wastewater receives comes from the water softening process. Not only municipal, but also private water softeners. About 20% comes residential wastewater. I told you, our body, bodies are naturally streaming salts. We're using detergents that are adding chlorides into the water stream. So about 20% comes from just residential wastewater. About 15% come from industrial and commercial processes. And then the remaining 15 or so come from other, other sources. In the simplest terms, there are two ways to comply with our discharge limit. Prevent chlorides from getting into the wastewater. So in other words, prevent all sources of chlorides and prevent, prohibit all salt-based water softeners, including municipal softening, or use energy chemical intensive processes to remove chlorides from wastewater at the wastewater treatment plant. These options, while technically feasible, come at an extremely high capital and operational cost and would be extraordinarily burdensome to pay or repay us. And so what have we done about this over the last 15, 20 years? Initially, in 2010, we hired an engineering firm to help us. This is when we thought, hey, this is a, this is an easy, solvable problem. One more to check off the list. And after about a year of study and analysis and looking at feasible alternatives, we realized that we were, we were not going to have an easy win on this one. We developed a list of feasible alternatives, the realization that reasonable alternatives would not result in compliance. And it wasn't the same challenge as conventional pollutants or CSO control. And so at the time, Angola was the only community faced with numeric chloride limits on its permit. And I mentioned here, other communities face chlorides compliance issues, but they, they had alternative paths. We sort of talked about some of those. On March 13th, 2013, Angola became, became the only Indiana community with an individual variance. And in 2025, we're still the only community.
That variance that we've been granted in our permit, I, I found non-compliances out on the internet. Are those non-compliances to the permit?
Those are non-compliances to our permit.
The permit.
Yes. So with a variance, we can move to the next slide, Ryan. With a variance came variance limits. So IDEM calculated the quality base level maybe down here. We said, there's no way we can meet that, but we're going to, we're, we're requesting a variance here. The things we're going to do, IDEM says, okay, this is your limit for this permit cycle. Next permit cycle, we, we tell them what we did. We said, we still can't beat this. And they say, okay, we're going to come down here. The last permit cycle, we were seeing some occasional exceedances. And as Jeff can attest to, and is what you found, this permit cycle, we've had a number of exceedances. We're at the place where I'm not sure it would be responsible to accept a permit with a lower limit because we just know that's going to expose the city to more violations of.
Do we get punitive damage over those violations?
Ultimately, that is, that's a possibility. At this point, IDEM recognizes, I think they recognize the nature of the challenge and they've not recommended that in any way, shape or form. Usually, my experience in Indiana is usually punitive damages are saved for communities or systems that are just absolutely refusing to do anything. IDEM, to their credit, they, they're easy to, to work with. They, if they see that you're trying to make effort, they, they will be amenable. But I think we're sort of at a place where, well, I know we're at a place where that, that we're going to have to make some hard decisions.
So Craig, you were saying, so here's, let's say, the limit that we're supposed to meet. We can't meet that, so they set it at a different limit. But each year, it sounds like we've done this, what, three times?
Three times, yes.
Okay. But each time, we have lowered the chloride a little bit each time?
On an annual average, maybe a little bit, but it's not by much. It's not by.
So essentially, we've done basically all of that to get to the very bottom that we can do with our current situation.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we're ahead of the game. We've always been ahead of the game, yet now we're getting slapped on the wrist, it seems like.
Well, you're really not doing anything wrong.
Yeah, that's.
It's what we're dumping it into. That's the issue. I mean, if you could take it and put a pipe in there, run three miles down to Pigeon Creek and have your dump right there, you'd be all set.
And, and that was one of the feasible alternatives that was evaluated in 2010. It's one that's been discussed frequently. The challenge is that IDEM would view that as a new discharge. And one of the other challenges that the municipal, that they're faced with are extraordinarily low mercury limits. We're a Great Lakes discharger. And because we have an old system, there's mercury that, that, that sits in low areas of pipes, things like that. And actually, the mercury limit is so low that it is, it is just above the method detection limit, which is, oh gosh, Jeff, help me. Do you remember that number? What is the detection limit? It's like point zero.
You're talking about what the guideline is today, not what we're discharging, but what the guideline is.
Right. It's like point 016 nanograms. It, it is a crazy small number. And if you detect it, as a matter of fact, as a, to sample, I would have to put a, a respirator on because I have fillings. My fillings have more mercury, enough mercury in them to pollute the, the sample. Okay. And so by moving that discharge, it's considered a new discharge and cannot apply for a mercury, what they call mercury variance. We have a mercury variance too. A lot of communities have mercury variance. It's called a blanket variance, different from the nature of the chloride variance.
So you don't think they would give us a mercury variance if?
They have told us wholesale they would not.
But they have it lots of other communities.
Because if we were to, so we have a mercury variance right now. If we were to build, let's say we decided that the solution here, because the Pigeon Creek doesn't, isn't, doesn't have a chlorides issue, we're going to build three miles of pipe and we're just going to discharge straight to the Pigeon River. IDEM considers that a new discharge and new discharges will not be given variances of.
Matter of fact, they're not a grandfather, even though we're doing exactly the same thing, just moving.
And one of the, and that's been a hot topic of discussion as well. And.
Nonsense. Do you, that's nonsense to me. That's just plain nonsense.
I'll let you draw your own.
Okay. That's nonsense.
Um, one of the other things that we've argued on that is, okay, even if we did, now what happens to the, what happens to the water quality in the HD wood ditch?
Yeah.
What happens to those aquatic critters?
They're going to be gone.
That they're so worried about. It's, it's, it is a, it is a, it's a crazy discussion to have, to have with these folks.
So Craig, you said Angola is the only individual variance. Is that just specific to chloride?
Angola is the only individual variance of any kind at all in the state of Indiana.
So that includes the chloride and the mercury?
The mercury sits in a sort of a separate bucket. It is not an individual variance. It was a, it was developed as a group program because they knew, even, even IDEM understands that when they, when they're going to run calculations, they're like, oh, nobody can beat this. And so mercury was that pollutant. And so communities are given a little bit of additional leeway in that, in that program. And that's really for only Great Lakes dischargers. Because, because we discharge to the Great Lakes, the mercury limits are, are crazy low. You go to Ohio River discharger and those limits are much, much higher. And it's because of the way the bodies of water are classified. The Great Lakes are considered an exceptional, a water body of exceptional value or something like that. I can't remember the exact language IDEM uses. Ohio River is not.
And IDEM is probably looking at, if you're trying to make an attempt to control it or reduce it, they'll utilize that as a.
Yes. We have a pollut minimization program planned for mercury as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the, the things that, you're right to note that a lot of the things that you see in the variance, the pollut minimization program plan, there's really a lot of, it's, it's really public. One of the main action items was water treatment plant optimization, which Tom and his crew went through a few years ago. And I'm not sure that the program, I mean, they went through, they went through that, that system with a fine-toothed comb. And I, at the end of the day, I don't know if there were many improvements that you even had to make. Yeah. You were already running things pretty much as tight as they could.
I was curious about the Purdue University Senior Engineering Project. Did that have any benefits come out of that?
They, they did some surveying to Angola residents, provided a little bit of context on, you know, how much water softening is going on, things like that. But as far as new education outreach efforts, there really, there really.
And they haven't tried to work with the state either on, at IDEM to.
No.
Find a way to.
There was not much there.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Got you.
Much there. Craig, correct me if I'm wrong. As a kid, I remember that, that, the backwash from the water plant went to Little Center Lake.
Yes, it did.
There's a reason we couldn't at least eliminate part of it that way and send it back where we were sending it, because that's a body of water.
The Clean Water Act. You're absolutely right. Randy, no, you're absolutely right. I went through that. And I think it was back in the seventies. It was in the mid, late seventies when the Clean Water Act came around. That was an outfall. It was identified, a pollutant that couldn't be sent to Center Lake and it had, it had.
We can send it to the river that goes to the lake, but we can't send it to the lake.
So there are some benefits too. So chlorides don't get removed, but there are some other things in that, in that water, in, in the backwash water that do. Iron is one. The wastewater plant does remove a vast majority of the iron that comes through. And there's some other inorganic pollutants that are in the backwash water that ultimately get removed through the wastewater plant as well. But.
If you're in the aqua firm naturally, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm having trouble. So we have not tried to just flush the tar out of it?
Flushed, um, no.
Well, like your discharge, you know, it's a trickle and it's just keeping that ditch working.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's an interesting question. So one of the, one of the feasible alternatives is considered stream flow augmentation, which is government speak for, you sink four, two million gallon per day wells and just pump groundwater up and flood the creek. The, the challenge to that is that we would still have, we still have loading limits because it's the way the Great Lakes rules are set up for discharges of all pollutants, not just chlorides, but for everything, ammonia, total suspension salts, all the things that we measure. It wouldn't change our loading limits, which we still could not meet.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but it's a great, it's a great question. Yeah. Like I said, five years ago, I was really hoping I would have to.
Yeah, I'm glad you're not talking to me about this. It's a nice thing to test it after all. That made me laugh.
Right.
I probably wasn't either.
Next slide. So five years ago, we recognized when we renewed our permit, there was a lot of additional scrutiny from IDEM and EPA on this variance process. As a matter of fact, it, it would have held up our permit, permit renewal. And so we hired a group called GEI Consultants in Michigan to seek assistance in assessing alternative options for long-term compliance. GEI was selected from a group of highly qualified candidates to assist, assist us in evaluating options, recommending alternatives for durable, long-term compliance. Data were collected from the wood ditch and two local comparison streams, the Coal Ditch and the Pigeon Creek. And images of those ditches are, are, sites are up on screen right now. The idea was let's, let's measure the aquatic inventory of the wood ditch downstream of the wastewater plant. And then let's find two similarly characteristic water bodies in the county that aren't impacted by wastewater effluent discharge and measure the critters, the aquatic health in those streams. And they evaluate physical, chemical, biological conditions contributing to aquatic life. GEI's study showed that while chlorides are a factor to the aquatic impairments identified by, by IDEM's historical studies, there is a very strong correlation among all three studied waterways relating to external factors such as land use, typical low, low flow stream characteristics, how much tree cover there is over the, the waterways, things of that nature. And these are very small streams, very low flow streams. And so as you would imagine, the, the, the variety of microorganisms found in there was relatively low. GEI provided three pathways that showed potential to provide Angola long-term compliance to the chloride issues. These three pathways were vetted through IDEM in 2023 and all, all three were ultimately rejected.
Why was that?
IDEM felt that they, they were not, they would not ultimately be approved by EPA. So that's the, that's the long and short. That.
I mean, you had evidence. You had, you had hard fact evidence.
Yes. And we, we met with IDEM a couple of times. I sort of recall a couple of meetings that we were pushing and IDEM just wouldn't commit to. And sort of frustrating, sort of ran out the clock on us in some, in some ways on that.
Craig, let me.
Yeah, no, please.
Where, where are we testing? Is it right where it dumps out? Is that where we're testing? Because Stoich's farm there, and certainly what they put on that farm has chlorides in it or more.
So for the, for the, for compliance testing, for what Jeff and his group test, it is right at the outfall, outfall of the wastewater plant. It is only that. This GEI study was downstream. I think that, I think this point in the Mud Creek was about a, maybe not quite a mile downstream from the wastewater treatment.
With what they're doing for.
Yeah.
To kill weeds and to, to fertilize, it has to have tons of chlorides in it.
Well, and, and that was one of the, that was one of the items that GEI was specifically looking at because they were looking for streams that had a heavy agricultural water use, land use around them, because they would all have that similar stress from agricultural use on them.
You were trying to get IDEM to chase a different rabbit. They don't like to be told to chase different rabbits.
So just a technical point, the Clean Water Act explicitly excluded agricultural activities from the Clean Water Act regulations. I'll let you form your opinion on that. I know that I've got my own. And so all of the pipes that you see going into a ditch along the county road are considered non-point sources to the water body and are not.
Because they're not created, they're nature, naturally made.
Like I said.
Got rain coming down.
I'll let you, I'll let you make your own assessment.
Craig, if I remember right, the results from these three tests were negligible. I mean, it was, there was a.
Yeah, you were on that, you were on that group. There, there were, there were some subtle differences in the Mud Creek.
Yeah.
That, that GEI, they, they absolutely believed that it was an impact from the wastewater treatment plant. But the, 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 the jump from one to another was almost, was negligible. I think that's a fair assessment. Yeah. Yeah.
We're the rope that tug the war.
And it's going to be curious to see where you end up with this because I still wonder, the political arena is changing, even in Indiana. And I wonder how much more IDEM will keep. And I wonder how much more I D M will keep, um, going down the rabbit hole versus backing off a little bit.
I, I think that's, uh, I think that's definitely a, uh, a part of something that should be part of the conversation for sure, for sure. Uh, the graph, uh, that's, that's up now, uh, just gives you an idea. We've been testing for, for chlorides since, uh, November of 2004. The dots are individual tests from the outfall of the Angola wastewater treatment plant. The red line is what is called the water quality based effluent limit. That is the calculated value that I D M says we absolutely must be below, below. The green line represents the variance limits that have been applied to our permit historically. And so, uh, you can see that as you move to the right side of that graph, uh, we, we have some of these dots that are way above, uh, that green line. We, we don't really have a good explanation for that. Um, uh, but at the end of the day, what really matters is the red line. And you can see that there are, um, two, maybe three dots out of, uh, 11 years of, uh, sampling history that ever got below that red line. So that's, that's, that's where we're at. Uh, so we are in the, currently in the middle of a permit renewal, uh, cycle. Um, uh, our permit expires, um, in May, uh, twenty, uh, thirty, thirty first of, uh, 2025. Uh, I D M, uh, has some public notice deadlines rapidly approaching. Uh, then they, I think they're related to our variance application. So despite the relaxed chloride limits provided by the variance and chloride reduction efforts by the water and wastewater utilities, as you saw in that last graph, we regularly exceed the permitted variance limits. Um, and I D M has hinted that the variance will likely not be approved by EPA and is recommending a five-year compliance plan, uh, requiring implementation technologies to meet the established water quality based effluent. And so now we come, uh, sort of right down to the nuts and bolts of it and, um, what's, what would it cost? Well, um, there are really four, what we consider feasible pathways, uh, to, uh, comply. Three of them would be at the water treatment plants, uh, two of them to change the way the water treatment plant softens its water. Uh, one to use a reverse osmosis filters, uh, one to change the lime softening. The third option at the water treatment plant would be to say, okay, we're going to leave the systems as is, but we're going to catch the brine, the softener brine, and we're going to push that through. And instead of sending that to the sewer, we're going to push that through a reverse osmosis filter, capture the brine. That's going to be classified as a special waste. It's going to be hauled landfill at a rate of about, I think that 35,000 gallons a day was the rough estimate, um, uh, based on our engineering from, I think, 10 years ago. Here's the challenge with all three of those options. They don't guarantee compliance. Um, I told you about 50% uh, comes from softening. Majority of that is municipal softening, but, uh, but that also includes residential, commercial, industrial softening. We can't control those entities. So none of these three options in my mind, um, are, they're not going to lead you to compliance. They might buy angle with some time, but at the end, a five-year compliance plan means at the end of the compliance plan, you apply with that water quality based effluent limit. It means you'll be below that red line that I D M set. And if not, what I D M's going to turn around and say is, well, okay, now what are you going to do? You're going to have to do more. You're going to have to do more. The fourth option, that first one on the list is taking wastewater treatment plant effluent and doing reverse osmosis filtration. That's not even tertiary treatment. That's, it, you, you, you do that type of treatment in places where you don't have drinking water available to you because you need drinking water.
So the animals are going to have better water than I drink.
Yes, yes.
The microorganisms are going to have better water than we drink.
Uh, Randy, uh,
How makes great water. No offense.
It's even, and, and absolutely. And if I could say something real quick to that, when we first started this back in 2004, um, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, previous superintendent, his thought was, well, fine, we just won't soften, we just won't soften water as much. And they, uh, water plant began sending out harder water. What do you think everybody did?
I bought a softener.
I bought a water softener. And those, and residential water softeners are, they're not as efficient. Uh, they're not going to be monitored with the same level of expertise and scrutiny than municipal water planets. And so it, it, we actually saw, we actually saw our chlorides go up that first year or two afterwards because of that. And, uh, when Tom came in, he said, oh, oh, well, we're going to, we're going to take this back. And it's taken a while to sort of get things back under control. Yeah. And so you're talking about, and, and keep in mind, this 12 million, uh, dollar estimate, that is a 2019 engineering estimate that's just had a C P I applied to it. We don't even know if that's a real.
It's 20 million or?
It could very well be 20 million.
Drop in the bucket.
And, and, and to be honest with you, I think that that's, I think that, I think that actually would be just a drop in the boot. Because the cost to push water through a filter at over a million gallons a day, uh, you have to clean those filters and they require two types of cleaning. They require a, a caustic cleaning and they require an acidic cleaning, um, to, to renew their, their efficacy. If you look in that.
Create more waste streams.
Yes, yes. And if you look in that second column, the estimated, uh, uh, operation and maintenance cost just for the R O, R O system is 1.3 million dollars. Ladies and gentlemen, your, your entire O and N budget for the wastewater plant right now, I think is just a little over $2 million a year. Quite frankly, the capital cost, it would be a drop in the bucket because of the, the, the O and M cost alone would be definite.
Anybody else in the state of Indiana doing what they're requiring here, reverse osmosis? Are we the test case?
No.
And what if, what if that doesn't work then?
I'm aware of only one other.
That's what you just said. If it doesn't work, they're affixed.
Yeah, I'm aware of only one other community in, in the United States that I think is even attempting to do this, um, uh, in, in this type of environment.
But they're saying EPA is making them make us and there's no other community.
Yes, blindly, um, they, they, they are saying the water quality standards, the water quality standard. That's what, that's what.
They're not giving us any option other than push back. We, we, we can't, because you're, our constituents aren't going to go.
Grow up yet.
No.
I can't vote for some.
So no.
For $500 a year for somebody.
Craig, could you elaborate on the focused use attainability analysis? That was an alternative that was, I believe, discussed with I D M. Is that a topic that could be revisited?
I, so, um, what, what, uh, Council Trucky is, is referring to is we, one of the things that G came out of the G I, G E I report was a, um, applying for a focused use attainability analysis. Basically what that, what the purpose of that is to, it's to identify a very limited stream segment and to say, listen, there are, there are characteristics of this water body that are outside of our control, um, that are, that are contributing to, um, uh, the degraded water conditions. And because of that, we're requesting a, a limited use designation for that stream. In Indiana, by default, all water, all water bodies, streams, lakes, creeks are, are by designation, uh, considered full body contact, fishable, swimable, um, streams and creeks. And in, in, and on the face, I think that's what we want, right? You want to be able to say that, hey, in Indiana, if you go into, up to a water body, you should be able to let your kid dip their toe into it, not have to worry about the, the consequences. But there's a process in Indiana code that allows, um, I, ideally, communities to apply a different standard because of things that are outside of their control. One of those can, things could be financial capability. One of those things could be, um, uh, what they call, um, man-made, man-made uses. Um, I, I, there are, there are, there are six or seven different categories. We ran this, um, in one of our work sessions with I D M through, uh, through them. And they said that they felt it was an inappropriate use of that, um, method, uh, to, to try to gain compliance. U A A's, and, and again, I think that this is what we would want as, as citizens of Indiana. We want our waters to be clean. U A A's alike, uh, variances are extraordinarily rare. The only two U A A's that I'm aware of in Indiana are City of Fort Wayne and City of Indianapolis for their combined sewer overflow, not compliance plans. Now, um, I think that there may very well be, um, the political winds have changed, uh, in the state and, uh, nationally. If we were to push that, would the reception be different this time? Um, I don't know. And I sort of, so I sort of see you being in two, two, two positions or really have two options that I, that I can see, and I'm, I'm happy to take other options. One is you say, fine, you know, we're going to do, we're going to go ahead and do something. And enter into an agreement for a five-year compliance plan or, um, seek, uh, what I have here, seek legal intervention, uh, to provide temporary relief while you buy time to negotiate, um, a more, uh, palatable option, uh, for Angola. And I think this is the place where, where, where Jeff and I have talked. I mean, I, I can't tell you how many discussions we've had with this, with our consultants, with engineers. And I think we've, we've pushed this as far down the road as we possibly can. And now I think it's, we're at a place because of the permit renewal deadlines and sort of I D M, uh, kicking the can down the road. Um, in my opinion, we're in a place now where we have to make, uh, a decision on, on what the will of the council, uh, is. Just so, just so you're aware, uh, you know, the, the pathway that, that you decide to go down, I mean, obviously if you say, hey, we're going to commit to, to building something, um, could you build the water treatment plant R O filtration system at, at, you know, 4 million, 5 million, 6 million, whatever it is now, and buy yourself 10 or 15 years? That's very possible. Um, you may be able to get a couple of variances on the back end of the construction, but I don't know. I, I have no guarantee of that, but I, but I know doggone well that it doesn't result in compliance with that water quality based effluent.
We're right back.
They're going to be coming back.
Craig, seems like there's crazy with everything and, and we're such an unusual case. And I know, I know the answer is going to be no, but are there any, I mean, EPA is making these restrictions. Do they provide grants? I mean, Flint's got all kinds of money in Michigan for a real problem there, but the federal government stepped up and paid a lot of their costs to give them decent water. Is there anything like that at all, even if it's a slim chance that we've got? Because this is going to be an economic burden to everybody and, and to our industries. We've, we've got these people here wanting to expand. They're putting out a lot of water. It could cost them a fortune to, to have to pay their share of that.
State revolving fund, it's very possible that Angola could apply and, and get, uh, some forgivable, uh, loan for, uh, the, the construction of improvement.
Not the operation.
But I guarantee you're not going to find.
And that's the cost of the loan.
Operation.
Still, we'll, we would be kicking the can down the road, in my opinion, if we were to do that, to be honest with you. I think we need to do something different.
So, so through, we still have a contract with G I. Uh, that, that program is still open because we've still been pushing, uh, with pushing I D M and trying to find something that they will bite on. Through that, um, uh, Angola has a legal agreement with, um, a, a, a law attorney, an environmental law attorney through, uh, Arch, Arch Fox Schiff, I believe, very well respected. And if Angola were, if you were to, to, to choose tonight to, um, you know, tap the brakes, say, hey, we want to push back, he's been, he's been briefed. He is aware of the situation you're in and would be able to send, to act very quickly, um, on Angola's behalf to begin a process while, um, obviously there'd have to be some, uh, agreements that would be forthcoming, uh, to, to secure a long-term relationship. What I'm trying to explain to you is that, just to make sure you understand, is we already have an existing agreement through our G E I contract that would help do, uh, some preliminary discussions with I D M, uh, if you felt that that was the direction you wanted to go tonight.
When I look back at this graph, yeah, we had three or four below the red line. But, but the vast majority is below the green line. And I don't, I think we need to make that well where.
I feel like I'm watching the movie Idiocracy. I mean, that's really what, what comes to my mind. They, they were pouring, uh, gatorade on the corn and it was killing the corn. And, and that's what, that's what the government said you should do.
As Mr. Coffey mentioned, you know, if you believe the news, prices are going to go up. And the last thing I want to do to our constituents is give them another burden and add includes our factories as well. So.
Yeah. We, we can dry up this town real easy.
I think we need to, you know.
We're trying to encourage people to move here and dollars and cents make a difference.
My personal opinion is that, and I'd like to hear from everybody on it. My personal opinion is that we utilize these environmental lawyers because we are not educated enough to go after this. I'm not. I'm telling you, these guys are scientists.
Yes.
And they need to push back until we can.
Well, if it, if, if it costs us $20 million to, to do the construction work, to build this reverse osmosis, and it costs us 20 million plus a million for a lawyer in the long run, again, I'm back to the term drop, uh, drop it in the bucket. It, it's, it's miniscule compared to what the raise is going to be, what it's going to cost us ultimately. I don't, I don't think we've got a choice.
The effect of the annual cost also makes it.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think you also said each one of these by itself will not bring us.
What's, what's our engineer on the board on the, uh?
Well, I was going to ask, when you say we have a contract with G E I that has the environmental law attorney, it's not like we've already paid some lump sum for this contract. It would be billable at rates. So.
That's right.
To Councilmember Coffey's point, we don't know what the cost will be to hire an attorney to go through this process.
Yeah. And to, and to be clear, uh, what I'm talking about with that existing contract, the G I, it is, it is, it is, uh, probably less than 20 hours of billable hours. It's the, you know, I, I'm, I'm shooting from the hip on numbers here, but that's not, it's not like that's going to carry you.
Unlimited.
It would just simply provide the, the initial point of contact to, I think, define where you would find yourself if, if that was the path we go.
Craig, is it feasible to ban the use of water softeners?
Is it feasible? Um, it is, it, it, California has done so. It, it is, in my estimation, I think it would be extraordinarily difficult to regulate any water softener, except those that are, that are in an industrial setting. Federal law provides us a lot of leeway over industrial discharges. We have a sewer use ordinance that is enforceable. Residential, typical residential wastewater is not covered by sewer use ordinance and I think would be extraordinarily cumbersome and difficult to, to regulate.
Would it help at all for us to initiate a campaign with the city residents and the industrial users on if you don't need your water softener, like here's some ways to eliminate that? And I know we've talked about it a lot, but I don't, I don't even know that that's something, you know, if we could.
Tom has been doing that for.
I know. I know. He's sent out a lot of things.
I, I have done it.
Yeah.
Put out letters, please shut off your softener. Yep. And, and.
Actually initiate a full-blown marketing campaign we have not done.
Done, uh, study. So, so, uh, Jeff's crew, um, as part of our industrial surveillance program, they, they sample effluent from industries. We, there are a couple that have, have had high chlorides loads to the system before. And they have been excellent, um, uh, to work with. Uh, they've actually implemented process changes that utilize more expensive chemicals to do the things that they do to reduce the chlorides that they discharge to the system. So through this pollutant minimization program activity, that's something that Jeff and his crew have already been actively doing. And, and that's sort of the idea of this, this plan is that, you know, through, um, quarterly newsletters, um, uh, uh, other, other, uh, things that Tom has done, they've, they've offered, uh, to go in and do water sampling and help people say, hey, you know, we can, you can, maybe instead of softening the whole house, you just soften the sink or the washing machine or something like that to help. And I think.
I think that that's a learned long-term.
Extraordinarily well. Extraordinarily well.
Customer money, you know, they're not leasing a software, they're not paying energy, they're not paying salt. Most of our customers have been real forthcoming on the environment and things, so.
So a question in my mind about that is, if, say, you got rid of all the softeners residential, would it bring us into compliance?
No, no.
It's not enough. And if we even got rid of the the city, we probably still aren't going to be in compliance.
So not, I don't, I don't believe you would be. It would be close. But I don't think that you would be in continuous compliance, which which would, which right back to.
There's chloride in the water I pump out of the ground before I treat it.
Yeah, what would you expect the?
That's a great point. We, yeah, real quick, there there is chloride in the. He's measured that out of the wells before it goes through treatment. They find chlorides in there. We've even asked IDIM to consider, hey, will you let us subtract that out? And they said, no.
And if we if we put these big wells in and pump, we we have the same problem there, wouldn't we? There, that's going to put chlorides in that we pump out of the aquifer.
I'm sorry.
What would you expect a reasonable settlement that the environmental lawyers might be able to work out with the authorities?
I I think I think a reasonable compliance path for Angola, durable compliance path. Would be reevaluating this use of ten ability analysis. That is a that is a.
Roll that down.
It is. It is redesignating that 2.9 mile stretch of the Stewood ditch. And acknowledging that it is not in compliance for for chlorides. Just chlorides. It's not a free blanket, you know, do whatever. But it it redefines that stretch of stream that it does not meet the water quality standard. But it actually goes into Indiana code. It becomes a.
Possible outcome.
I believe that that's, I believe that's a feasible outcome as well. Yeah, we tried that in 2023. IDIM rejected that, but I I. I I don't want to, I don't want to give you a false hope. But I do believe that we've seen more favorable responses out of some other programs that that. I'm on Indiana Water Environment Association, our state association's government affairs committee. We meet with IDIM quarterly on a number of programs and we have seen them. They they can take our ideas all day long and run with them if they want. And that seems to be what they're doing in some of the areas that we've been working with them. So I feel like there may be a a pathway there that wasn't there two years ago.
Great. So I guess for a timeline purpose, the reason it's in front of us today is because initially we thought we could get. The variance as we've gotten in the past, but then hit some roadblocks and tried to negotiate through that. But now it's at a point where it expires next month and a decision has to be made.
Yeah.
Of what we'd like to do for the permit.
That's exactly right. The timing of our permit renewal was poor. And that's not, that's not saying that there's anything we did. Our our application was due to IDIM the middle of November. Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, nothing happens for a month and a half.
Yeah.
And so because of that, I. I think if we were, if if we were in a situation where renewal now, we would have heard a month and a half sooner, but.
Devil's advocate here, Craig, we we get turned down for the permit and we tell everybody in Angola, they can't flush their. I mean, I mean. What do they do? They come and shut us down? I mean, that sounds like what they're trying to do to our community almost. Let's let's close the place up.
I think that the the appropriate action would be that. Likely what what would happen is IDIM would issue a permit with no chlorides variance. You're not going to meet your limits. You're going to be in violation. And and again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm I so. An appropriate environmental law lawyer would tell you, but I believe what you would do at that point is you would you would. Appeal your case to environmental law judge. And ideally, if they found merit, they would issue a stay where they said, listen, we're going to, we're. There, these are some big issues. We're going to, we're going to reissue your previous permit and hold that. You need to comply. You have your permit to discharge. And then put timelines with the city and with IDIM to show that they are making progress in. Coming to attainable solution. That's the, that's what, that was what we lacked in 2023. And I'm, and and again, I am not trying to throw anybody at IDIM under the bus. They they they're they're good to work with. But there is, they only had the petitioner barking at them, trying to push a timeline. With a stay, an environmental law judge, they, somebody has to show up before that law judge every, I don't know, 90 days or something like that and report progress. And so it puts an administrative stress on the agency that we don't have the ability to do ourselves.
So I think, Craig, the question here is, do we sign the permit for the next five years? That has a stipulation that we will work toward meeting their requirements. At whatever cost that is with your estimates. Or do we obtain a legal counsel to probably guide us possibly in a different direction? Is that the question that you're asking this council to answer tonight?
That's that's what I believe Jeff needs tonight, so he can advise.
Now, counsel, what is your, and we're just asking for a consensus, I believe. Of of what the council would like to do, have the administration do moving forward. What direction would you like the administration to move forward with?
Lawyer. It's the long term plan of the wastewater treatment department, the plant. Because I think we talked about a long term plan was being looked at as far as capacity and growth. And are some of these mechanisms being looked at as part of that planning opportunity? Because I'm just afraid if we do go down this path and we get a stay, then we're just, five years from now, we're going to be in the same situation with higher costs. Is is that something that could happen or do you see this in a different direction?
If 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 Angola were not to come to a solution that that IDIM would would agree on. What a use of ten ability analysis. A site specific limit was one of the other things. Then yes, you would be back in the same boat. But but again, you know, and and I I wish I could tell you with certainty, you know, what 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 the best path, best path to take was. You are right. You could feasibly end up sort of having the same conversation in three years or five years. Absolutely.
Which we've been doing for the last 15 years. And the numbers you're throwing out here, obviously you have to adjust them for inflation. But you also have to adjust them for capacity increases. These numbers are at today's capacity. We do know that we will be seeking capacity limits. We are, we are looking at all kinds of environmental concerns. We're taking on the state park to keep them from dropping their affluent into Lake James, which is more environmentally friendly. We're looking at taking one of the rest areas right now. We're looking at other areas of the county that are underserved by. Adequate sewage treatment facilities. Those have, in my opinion, those have far broader environmental payback than this. I don't see any huge environmental payback. There are better ways to be environmentally friendly to spend our limited resources, in my opinion, but this is a council decision.
Well, I haven't heard that this is derogatory towards environmental people. So I I follow the path that we go down to the lawyer, that we push back.
Wouldn't argue.
I think if we don't, you're kicking us into being a dying community. If we can't expand industry, if we can't expand housing, if if we, in essence, this is a tax. We're going to tax our constituency, a substantial tax that really doubles what they're paying for their sewer. I mean, it it's doubling the taxes and they're telling us we have to do that. We're we're killing this community and I was born here. I grew up here. I went to college here. I've lived here my whole life. And I, it's the worst thing that can happen to this community is is to tell industries they can't produce anymore and that people can't flush their toilets. And and if you do, you're going to pay out out your bucks for it. That's that's what we're really saying. Something that makes no sense to any of us. I think we can all conclude that. This isn't, this is crazy to me. We're banging our heads on the wall. Uh, so I I I'm in favor of doing anything we can to to change what ultimately I think will kill our community.
Discharge is only going to increase.
Yeah. We're we're really looking at, well, the the harm to this community is fantastic, I think. It's if we're required to do what the star up there requires.
When we say move forward with the lawyer, we're looking at getting advice from the environmental law attorney on what options we could pursue. And we need to get that feedback by our next council meeting. Because is it the end of May that we need to have something in place?
If it, the end of May is when our permit expires. IDIM is is really what they're looking for is a a thumbs up or a thumbs down to agreement of a five year compliance plan. With capital expenditure, understanding that if it's thumbs down, that's likely, I mean, you know, that. Really what your intentions are.
Yeah, somebody walks into Joe's office or when I had a law office, when somebody walked in my office. You had an initial consultation. We need at least that. We need to be able to tell him what our problem is. He sounds like he's already, she.
Yes.
Is aware of what what the situation is and then we need to hear, this is going to cost you this much. And here's the likelihood you're going to win, lose, or get something in between. I'm ready to take that step and get that advice from that person though, as soon as we can. And that would be what I would like to see happen.
So, you know, if 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 the consensus of the council is we are not ready to commit to a a five year compliance plan. That your your approval, Jeff, Jeff and I can communicate with our our engineer, Commonwealth engineers. To go ahead and begin the process of of having the the. I just drew Blaken's name and it really doesn't matter, but having the attorney begin the process of saying, okay. This is, this is sort of the intention right now of Angola. What what's what's it going to look like? And that way he can begin understanding the the framework, the boundaries of where you're going to be at. And begin working with the mayor on establishing, you know, a long term contract if that's in fact.
We got, then we got to have numbers from him so we can have Ryan say, yeah, we can even afford to do that.
Can we do a straw poll of the council? General Schrake, Councilmember Schrake, what do you prefer to do?
Get a consultation for the environmental law attorney.
Councilmember Dow.
I'm going to phrase it a different way. My recommendation is to not go down a five year compliance path.
And take a legal route.
Yes.
Councilmember Durman.
I believe we should take the legal path and see where that leads us.
Councilmember Coffee.
What they said.
Okay, I think we have a decision. Craig, thank you for lending your expertise. Commitment to our community has absolutely been invaluable. We could not work our way through this without you. Thank you. Yeah, I think Jeff, thank you, because I know you've worked very hard on these issues.
And I I'll say this, I I believe if any of you have any questions as you move through this. My, I I'm more than willing to 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 answer questions. Frankly, this is why I'm still here before you tonight is because I have, I I believe that we had set a path that was right for the community. And I am extraordinarily frustrated with what we stand tonight. And I and I'm 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 here fighting your corner, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, report, Court Treasure.
I'm fully in.
Come on, talk to me. You got something. Evan? Steve?
No report after all that.
No report, sir.
Chad back there?
No report.
No report. I'm 30, no, we're 20, 25?
25.
We're just calling him Mr. 25. Amanda? Chief?
No reports, sir.
Very good.
Request approval of allowance of cost payable after 73,497 through 73,808, totaling 2,993. 2,993,300 and hours of 55 cents, including interfund transfers of 1,552,900 dollars.
Will we pay the bills?
It's a lot of numbers. Second, motion, second, any discussion? All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business this evening?
I'd just like to thank the city for their prompt response to our flooding issue. And and their efforts, so fire department, alcohol department and surrounding communities.
It was, it was all hands on deck, street wastewater, fire department, water, we had everybody, engineering.
Even the mayor.
Yeah, I was at the bottom of the trench once or twice myself. Yes, I appreciate all their work they did. Next council meeting Monday, April 21. With that, we, oh, Councilmember Shipe, or excuse me, Commissioner Shipe, anything you'd like to add this evening? Just pleasure to be here. Pleasure to have you. Thank you for for being here. Appreciate it. And Officer Robert, do you have anything for us this evening? Okay, very good. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.